I am your friend in stripes, Commissioner Treese.
At least they're not the other way. In jail or something.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, welcome back. So Chair Harrington, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, welcome back everyone to the afternoon portion of the June 7th, 2022 Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington and I'm joined this afternoon with Commissioners Pam Treese and Nafisa Fai. Commissioner Rogers is on county business in Washington DC and Commissioner Willie is excused on personal business, so. We have a few topics on our agenda for this afternoon and the first one is our Information Technology Services Strategic Plan. So I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Angie and her team with Chris Gensler, our Chief Information Officer. Take it away.
And thank you Chair and I will ask that Rachel Fuller, Assistant County Administrator introduce this item, please.
Great, thank you Ms. Angie and nice to see you Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Really pleased to introduce Chris Gensler, the Washington County Information Technology Director and Chief Information Officer. This really is an information only presentation. We are going to give you an overview of the priorities within IT and I think you'll notice a real focus on continuous improvement and a one Washington County perspective in service to the community and the organization. So we are of course available to answer questions and address any concerns and with that I will turn it over to Chris.
All right, well, hang on a second. Well, good afternoon Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. I am Chris Gensler, the Chief Information Officer. And here with Sam Kim, our Deputy Chief Information Officer. We're very excited to be here today to present the IT Strategic Plan, which is a result of much hard work by the ITS team in collaboration with our business partners across the county. This was particularly challenging as we were doing this work against the backdrop of the pandemic response and support. So we are very glad to finally be here today to provide this overview of our efforts. Next slide, please. So today we will touch briefly on the history of IT at Washington County, what we are seeing, what informs our work, our updated mission vision, guiding principles, along with strategic objectives. We'll cover a few of the current and future efforts as well as things we need to be thinking about as we move forward and we will close with a brief update on our IT governance and cybersecurity efforts. Next slide, please, thanks. The purpose of today's meeting is to provide the board with an overview of the IT Strategic Plan and to answer any questions the board might have. Next slide, please. So ITS was historically positioned as a low cost service provider, just keep the lights on, keep it lean and mean. We were not doing a lot of investments in technology or staffing to keep pace with the ever changing environment. But in collaboration with accounting leadership, we began to shift our mandate from a low cost service provider to a strategic business partner. Doing this required additional investments in technology and staff, which we have received great support for. We are well on our way in that journey. We've added a project management office to improve solution delivery, invested heavily in infrastructure and cybersecurity and we've added services to better support the workforce and community. Next slide, please. As we started the effort, we first looked at trends in technology. What were the opportunities and challenges we were seeing? The first is cloud everything. Traditional IT services are increasingly moving to cloud providers. This improves time to deliver services and solution and it allows IT staff time to focus on higher value activities. And while the shift to cloud service definitely has advantages, it must still be well managed with new skillsets needed to fully leverage the benefits. It also shifts IT costs from capital operating expenses, cloud solutions expand over time. So you can expect to see IT costs continue to rise. Work from anywhere, whenever the pandemic really drove this effort home, it requires additional investments in infrastructure and services to support a much more mobile and remote workforce. We see increased focus on data driven decision making that requires additional investments in things like data warehousing, data analytics and visualization practices. And we're continuing to focus on community engagement opportunities that enhance experiences to help provide additional access and transparency to county services. We're also faced with some challenges immediate our mission. Cybersecurity continues to be an ongoing effort as new threats emerge daily and talent gap as we shift to new service delivery paradigms, our skillsets need to be constantly refreshed. Recruiting across the board is quite challenging now and especially difficult for some IT positions. Next slide, please. We then looked at identifying the critical drivers that inform our work. We tried to capture both internal and external forces that shape what we work on. Design the future is a key component and making sure everything we do is viewed through the one Washington County lens. Community engagement and transparency continue to be a focus. Anywhere operations that support the mobile and remote and mobile workforce. Tools and practices that help drive data driven decision making are becoming more important. And with pressure on personnel cost, operational effectiveness will play a large part as we look to automate and optimize operations wherever we can. Cloud services are emerging as the solution of choice. And cost optimization is always at the core of how we think about IT service delivery. And as always, cybersecurity concerns drive much of the efforts to keep the county safe. Next slide, please. We then shifted to define the expectations of how we deliver services. The outcome of this is our updated vision, mission, guiding principles and core values. These really become the North Star for our staff and should inform how they approach the work they do. I'm not going to go through the whole slide or everything on the slide, but I do want to emphasize under guiding principles, we have something called Find a Path DS. And we really emphasize that with our staff and what we mean by that is let's work with our business partners to find solutions to the challenges they are bringing us. Next slide, please. We next define the key strategic objectives and initiatives. This work was informed by many inputs, the existing county, the existing county 2020 document, Board and CAO Direction, Office of Equity and Inclusion and Business Partner Collaboration across the county. We had external participation and review from key industry consultants. And through that effort, five key objectives were identified with initiatives identified for each of those. And the first is digital government, which focuses on how we can better deliver services digitally to enhance both staff and community experiences, employee empowerment. We have a fantastic dedicated customer service focused staff that we want to continue to support, develop and retain. So this includes efforts that align with that to make ITS an employer of choice. Innovation champions innovative ways to deliver services and improve efficiencies. Cybersecurity and risks prevention, our efforts that enhance security, reduce risk and ensure regulatory compliance. And finally, financial stewardship focuses on ensuring we are good stewards of public funds with the appropriate transparency along with technology lifecycle planning and efficient solution delivery. On these objectives, we do know work is underway to update the county's strategic plan. We'll continually update the ITS plan to align with the county plan as it moves forward. Next slide. Framed against these strategic objectives, we have aligned the work effort across the county and defined a set of initiatives that help us move forward towards those objectives. Many of these efforts are currently underway. There's been lots of work around anywhere operations and building out the infrastructure services support for our mobile and remote workforce. Website redesign as the digital gateway to county services is continuing to make good progress and on track for a September launch. Ongoing process improvement projects, including workflow digitization and automation that leverage the tools the county has already made significant investments in. We continue to expand our data collection analytics and visualization practices to support data driven decision making and equity based outcomes. Cybersecurity efforts are ongoing, including implementing a standard security framework. And in addition to those, we have many upcoming efforts that we want to highlight the require both significant capital investments as well as resources across the county. The first is the need to replace our Enterprise Resource Planning System or ERP. This is the HR payroll finance, our wizard system. This effort will be very large, multi-year, multimillion dollar and it will require resources from across the county to complete. We will have additional work on equity, data collection, analysis and reporting. And again, we need to support and align to the county strategic plan efforts as they move forward to ensure everything is viewed through a one Washington County lens. Next slide, go ahead.
Chair Harrington has her hand up.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted you to take a breath.
Okay, I'll pause. You're, you're.
Chris?
Yes.
I need you to slow down.
Okay.
Um. So. So this information is not foreign to me. But you've gone awfully, you've gone over it very quickly. So it's not that you're talking fast. You're presenting a lot of information quickly. And when we get to questions later, I need to, I'll be articulating that I need you to go back over slides 10 and 11. And this one too, because you presented them so quickly. But more importantly, what I should have said before that is this presentation may be the only effort I make at understanding your strategic plan. So I'll ask you some more specific questions later. But I already feel three slides in, I'm not on the journey that I think you want me to be on. So I'll come back later on with my specific questions on these slides. But I just wanted to, to raise a flag now to please slow the rest of the presentation down so I can be fully on the journey with you. That's all. Because there's a lot of tremendous value here. You want, you want each of the three of us to get it. And my two colleagues here may be totally caught up and spot on, but I know I'm not and I'm so sorry.
I, you know, it's really funny. We're trying to balance, you know, making sure we get through the material and leaving enough time for Q and A. So, you know, if we didn't get the balance that right, I apologize for that. So I'll, I'll, I'll pause a bit more and make sure that we, we include between the slide transitions, any questions if you want as a, or kind of a better way to step through that.
I don't know. Keep going for sure. I know I'll ask questions at the end. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, so we, yeah, we just talked through this. So the we know that the future brings changes, challenges and opportunities. So we've identified a few of them. And these include the need for ongoing investments in infrastructure and services. Everything has a life cycle and it must be managed against that. So as I previously mentioned, ERP is a big one. It's a big investment for the county. We have others. The phone system is nearing its end of life and will need to be replaced. And again, that's a big multi-year, multimillion dollar effort. Storage, backup and other critical infrastructure and services, software all need to be life cycled on an ongoing basis and require continual investment to leverage the maximum value from them. The, the shift to cloud based services will, as I mentioned before, increase IT operating expenses moving from a purchasing model to a subscription model, capital will go down and operating goes up over time. And one of our key objectives is financial stewardship. And part of that is the need to establish a governance model that ensures IT investments and resources are aligned with the county strategic plan. And then again, all of that needs to be considered through the one Washington County lens and we need to put processes in place that, that help ensure that. Right, next slide. So as I mentioned in the previous slide, a significant part of the strategic plan is to implement an IT governance model to make sure ITS is always working on the next most important thing for the county. This model needs to support a one Washington County vision and ensure efforts are aligned with that. It will include the creation of a multi-year strategic investment roadmap that will facilitate both capital and resource planning. And efforts are well underway with the ITS Portfolio Steering Committee formed, development of the charter that will govern their work is proceeding along with building the framework that will drive the next round of capital planning in 2324. We are very excited about the progress on this one and the value we believe it will bring to the county. This is a first for us, so I think all the, everybody's excited on this one. And then next slide. And security. I will close with cybersecurity. This is the one thing that keeps most of us up at night. We have made many improvements over the last few years that significantly enhance our security posture, but our work is never done here. Staff training continues to be the most critical factor as a majority of incidents are due to a single actions by a single employee. So the, our annual security awareness training and ongoing phishing simulations are critical components of the cybersecurity plan. We need to make sure staff is up to date on the threats and risks. And as always, we continue to have an array of improvements for our security posture, including implementing a standard security framework, deploying modern tools to keep pace with the threats, enhancing our monitoring and detection capabilities. So next slide and that was, that wraps up the presentation. The full plan was included in the agenda item and we're going to pause here to welcome the feedback and input. And so hopefully we can go back over anything that, that you would really like us to go back and focus on. And we want to emphasize this is a living document that we expect to update as we learn more and as we move forward. And again, with that, we'd love to answer any questions you might have and provide any additional context.
Well, I sort of let the cat out of the bag to my colleagues that I have questions and I don't want to, I want to make sure that if they want to dive into the, the pool first, feel free to do so. Otherwise, tag I'm it. What do you think? Tag I'm it? Oh, yes, Trice, you're on mute.
You're, you're it for me.
I would, I would just like to ask one question. Is it possible to get a visual representation of, of all the IT services and, you know, I, I just have this vision in my mind that it's kind of like a skeleton with, you know, a central part, but with big components off to different sides. And then, and then how, how it relates to the cloud is a separate issue. Is that possible? Am I out to learn from that one?
You're asking a bunch of high tech thinkers, architects, engineers to put together essentially an architecture map of their work.
Well, but not very complicated one. You know, I don't want to go that far, but I'm just having trouble understanding where different components interrelate. You know, when, when we talk about the, is it ERP, the, the system which is, which includes all the HR work, all wizard, all, is that, am I correct about that?
Yes.
So I don't know how that relates to other components or if it does or not. Or does it just relate to other services? So I, I'm just, and I'm expressing my lack of knowledge here. But, but I, after, after, after the outage that we had, you know, I, I think that brought to all of us the, you know, first of all, the appreciation for the staff that we have that, that helped us back, get back on the, you know, on the straight and narrow, so to speak. But, but it also made me realize, I don't, I have no idea. When we talk about facilities, I can see that stuff. You know, but I, it's, this is a different animal to me.
Yeah, let me take a, Chris, if I could take a stab at that one. The answer is yes, Commissioner Treese, we could certainly do that. And I think I'm hearing two things. What are the services that IT provides within the county? So everything from security to client support. So services to people. And then what are our major systems? What are the major systems that we also maintain? And so we could certainly follow up with both of those pieces of information as background.
And it will help me as I look at that strategic plan, just to have a better grounding. Thank you.
And if I could grow on that one a little bit. There are different departments and portfolios that deliver services to our communities. And some departments have, well, from department to department, there are different service needs, right? So for example, land use and transportation, they use software for those virtual open houses that allow people to map different projects and dollars. But also the design work and across jurisdictions, they have to be able, IT needs to be able to support the different jurisdictional requirements for different software systems that have to work together. But also, you know, if we think about also in LUT, the, the building plans that our, our community members can submit, right? There's software for that, that IT integrates. So there are different types of customers as well. The, the GIS team, right? Has different map software. The, the work that our road design engineers and our road maintenance folks need to use internally, right? So there are systems that IT needs to support for them to do just their internal work that our community experience by virtue of pavement overlays, you know, the construction of materials. So I think we have a gut, a gut level appreciation for, there's quite a vast array of services that you have. Commissioner Treese was highlighting like ERP being some core, that core HR finance and payroll set of systems that, you know, whether you're a public government or a private corporation, you need that stuff. So it, it is, it's vast and, and there are different front ends that you need to support. Whether we're folks trying to pay our property tax bill or, or use a contact website, right? Sending emails to commissioners. So she's spot on in. I can see where it would be really helpful for us to have such a pictorial view of the layers of systems that you provide today and the types of customer sets that make up your business partners. So wow, thank you Commissioner Treese.
Yeah, one of the things I will say, you know, coming from the private sector into the public sector is it's, it's a unique challenge within the county because really you've got really 14 kind of different unique lines of business and, and we do have enterprise applications that they all use, like email and teams and some, some of the others. And ERP would be one of those. And then with the, within each department, there are almost always unique applications that really are, are, that they may use or maybe some that a couple of departments use. But yes, there's a lot of very unique applications. So we, we can kind of draw you a big map of here, here's the enterprise applications that everybody uses. And then by kind of line of business across the county, they're the, the major applications that they use that help support their business functions. So we, we'd be glad to put that together for you. When, when we do something like ERP, by the way, you know, there will be briefings on that and, you know, we'll, we'll definitely provide a good context and overview of what it is and how it impacts the county and, and that sort of thing. ERP again is a, is probably one of the biggest projects the county will, will, technology projects the county would do because it is so vast and it impacts just about, you know, all the key functions the county performs. So that one will be, you know, you'll, as we ramp that up, you'll continue to get briefings on, on what that looks like and how we envision that moving forward.
If I could pick up on that. The Enterprise Resource Planning System, ERP. It, it's vast. Yep, I get that. It impacts all key functions. So if I'm an employee, I'm just going to pick on different examples. I'm an employee in the roadworks department other than, you know, depending upon HR for my paychecks and my W whatevers for tax every year. How is it that ERP helps me do my work? It, I'm trying to get that, how do we communicate with diff, all the different levels of planning and implementation here in our county? So that all 2,400 plus employees can relate to what ERP does for us.
And that's actually, you know, we, we talked about that a bit where, you know, what's the communication plan look like and how do you communicate? Because we, we have major stakeholders and minor stakeholders. Everybody's a stakeholder at some level and, and it will impact them to, to your point. Less so for somebody that maybe works on the road crew, but still they interact with, with the HR systems, they interact with the payroll systems. And, you know, this work will, you know, undoubtedly will implement a new much, much more modern system that will have a variety of ways you can interact with it. I, I don't know anybody that's in love with going into wizard and creating time cards and a.
Good example.
In a, yeah, and you know, we just, you know, any system we pick is probably going to have ways to do that in a much more modern, you know, either through your, your phone or through a tablet or, you know, any number of ways that you can interact with the system. So there'll be, there'll be improvements pretty much across, we can anticipate improvements pretty much across every stakeholder group. And, you know, one of the challenges we have is how to make sure that we identify what those are. And so people really are excited and looking forward to, you know, what the new ERP system, system will bring.
Let me just double check Commissioner Treese or Commissioner Fai, did you have any other questions at this point? No, okay. Alrighty, so. My first point is prior to going to slide 10 through current trends and strategic drivers, I just want to offer up a couple of needs that I didn't necessarily hear articulated or see. But I, I assume they're correct, but that's why I'm sharing them and raising them. It's my thinking that there are evolving service demands that we have, both by virtue of external requirements. You know, we have to interface with state systems all the time, right? And those may change or we have been more mindful of state mandates, right? From the federal government as well. Of, we have been hearing a lot over the last nine months about our housing team working with HUD on different programs. So I'm assuming there is new reporting that they have to do. There are different federal requirements for implementing some of this stuff. And then we have regional as well, right? With Metro, our regional partners. And some of their requirements may use some of the same standard tools, whether it's PDFs or Excel or whatever, or particular databases. But you and your organization provide all of. But you and your organization provide all of that underlying infrastructure that all of our policymaking, investment decisions and implementation is, sets on top of essentially. But we also have some in turn, evolving internal demands. For example, in, in, as a member of the commission, I am mindful that when we ask our county administrators for data, that a bunch of the data that we're looking for to analyze may be housed in different information systems. And those information systems aren't necessarily set up to talk to one another or to produce integrated levels of support in a timely fashion that we're looking for. So that's where I've been learning from Ms. Angie that we want these systems to be more modern in terms of their capability and their integration so that we can extract value out of the base data and use more of that in our own decision making. Does any of that sound realistic?
Well, that's exactly when we, when we talk about business analytics, that's really what we're talking about. So
Okay.
You know, we, we do have
Speak your language then.
Or no, no, I, I gotta do a better job of speaking yours. So what we're trying to say there is exactly that where we have systems and we'll always have disparate systems and, and you know, that there hasn't been as much emphasis historically on making sure that those integrate and that we can get data out of those. Years ago, we started working on developing what, you know, what's called data warehousing where you, you, you take all that data from the disparate systems and you try to bring it together into a common database. And that way you can reference that. And then there's tools you can put on top of that, that, that improve your data analytics and data visualization. So we're, you know, we're well on the way of doing that. So we've got a data warehouse built out and we're currently populating it with, you know, with just, you know, hundreds and thousands of data sets now, and we continue to expand that. So as new needs are cropped up, then we figure out ways to get the data out of a disparate system that we need and put it in the warehouse. So all the data is available. So you, you can make, you know, informed, on time dated driven decisions. And you know, we're providing the platform for that. So that shows up in two places. That's on the, the, the business analytics that's on this slide. And then the next slide, we talked about data driven decision making.
Yep.
And, and those are the two areas where we really focus on, on that particular piece of the technology pie, which is, you know, having access to the data when you need access to it.
Yep. And by the way, This is where, this is an example of how you, for me, just for me, you were presenting this, but I couldn't absorb it quickly enough, right? So on the slide, for example, under business analytics, you have all those words, but I couldn't absorb them, read them, hear them and absorb them quickly enough. So thank you. I appreciate your patience. I would, on the next slide, on the strategic drivers. I wrote down increase on organizational effectiveness. I think I may have heard you say, or I thought I can't remember which. Organizational effectiveness and the increasing role of that. And from my viewpoint, one of the reasons why there's a heightened need of that is we have been blessed, if I just speak about affordable housing and supportive housing services, right? We've been blessed with voter approved funding in those two areas. But the, we are limited by the amount of, of dollars that we can use to both implement the systems that we need, whether they're computer data, whatever. And the human personnel that we need to perform the work so that more of the dollars or as much of the dollars as possible are put into direct community action. And so there's, we have two examples of that, right? Which keeps the pressure on us to be as organizationally effective as possible. And this is where your IT expertise really helps us maximize that. And we're seeing that come into play with the three county, tri-county effort, right? We, there are new systems in place for homeless services across the three counties. And there's technology behind that data sets and whatnot that we didn't have before. We were more counties in our separate silos. So I just want to recognize that ever evolving reliance upon the work from you and your team. Slides 10 and 11 and even 12. I, please know, I don't disagree with any of this at all, right? But rather, holy jamoly. I actually needed you to spend a little bit more time helping me appreciate the work that you've all done together to define this set. Or did you just take it out of a magazine and adopt it as is, right? That's the sort of the extreme fun positioning I'm trying to make here. Help me understand that you and your team and your business, your various business partners have this level of understanding that here is a, a, a vision and a mission and a set of guiding principles that we think will carry us over the next three years or so with this strategic planning effort.
So I actually I'm, so I was looking at slides 10 and 11, those were the, not the slide that's up there. So
Oh, really? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I just want to make sure that I, I'm referencing the right.
You're on the right ones, this one and the next two.
Okay, yeah. So so this was the work of, actually, this was a lot of work. You know, we took a look at the existing mission, vision, and we really didn't have core values or guiding principles well defined. And we, you know, we met as a leadership team and we kind of talked through, we had facilitated sessions with an outside consultant that kind of helped drive forward. We, we looked at the, all the information that was available to us at the time. You know, what's, what informs us of the things we know that, that are in the county 2020 plan? Cause that's the most current strategic document we have, as well as the new directions we see the county and board going in. And, you know, we're general directions, we see technology going in and then what's important to us. And so that was through many workshops kind of refined into what we thought was a, an updated vision, mission. And, you know, again, the, the values and guiding principles. So this is definitely not out of a magazine. It was definitely the result of a lot of hard work by our staff. And, you know, what we felt really kind of highlighted, the things that we think are important and the things that we think that you guys think are important as well. And so, you know, one of the things we did is we, we came up with this and then we said, we, we think we're capturing both IT and Washington County well. But then we pivoted and we met with every department. We sat down with all of our business partners and said, hey, we think these are the things that are important. You know, not only did I keep it to the county, you know, are we missing anything? And, you know, we, so it included feedback from all of our business partners. And again, we did meet with each of them individually to go through, you know, our thought process, how we got here to make sure that if we were missing something or something didn't resonate, that we were making sure that it did. And so that was the, this is the result of, of a lot of hard work by the team to, you know, come up with something that we felt really good about. And that we could then pivot to our staff and ask them to understand and embrace. We've got, you know, printout of this and well, our original plan was to put in everybody's queue, but you know, then the pandemic hit, so. We just have a digital copy of it now and ask them to make it their, their, you know, their.
That's okay. In my home office, I printed out a couple of different things on eight and a half by 11 and pasted them up in my little home office. So yep, I could see how it might be useful to tie your various team members together. Great. You brought it to life for me in a way that really resonated for me. Thank you.
And I apologize for, you know, maybe not spending a bit more time on it because it was really, it really was a lot of work. And I probably undersold the, you know, how, how we got here. And, and, and we do have something we call strategy on a page and it's this information plus, plus the, the key objectives. And, and that is something that we, we do have posted. So folks, if they're on, you know, and, and the guidance we give them is, you know, if you're on the phone with a business partner and you're trying to decide what to do, well, just look up and let that guide you on how you want that interaction to occur and make sure that you're adhering to, you know, the values and the principles that, that we're asking you to. So.
That's a great approach. Thank you. Yes, we're all humans trying to do good work. Thank you. That, that really did, really did help a lot for, or it did, it answered my question. I, I wrote a question down and it's all checked off. Now for the next slide. The, the interesting question that I came up here for myself that I couldn't answer is I thought for a second, wow. What about this whole set of information here, these five key focus areas? What is unique here? As we are a public agency as opposed to a private corporation, right? If I'm a private corporation, I know I need to do more of my work digitally. I know employees are our best tool. Innovate, it's like you better innovate or you become petrified wood. Cybersecurity, oh yeah. And financial stewardship, of course, values for our stakeholders. And here for us, it's value for the community members we serve, right? But it's like, okay, wait a second here, Catherine. I do see public interspersed here. So I just wanted to ask for you or of you. If you could help me appreciate how, yes, I know that there are comments, some common approaches between the work that you and the experts on your team do that may be common with the private sector. But can you help me better appreciate, because we are a government? What perhaps out of these key focus areas might be somewhat unique to us in government? That maybe our private sector peers don't necessarily have to deal with.
So I, I, well, the, the first thing I would say to that is transparency. So when I worked for a private company, you know, transparency was not something we focused on much. It wasn't in the
Yeah.
It just wasn't a topic. And we talk about transparency all the time now. And, and so a lot of what, what you'll see interspersed here is the things we do, we have to do with increased transparency and community engagement. And so those are the two, I would say to me, that one of the, two of the biggest things that we, we want to make sure that kind of permeate everything we do. Digital government is a good example of that where, and, and again, we learned this through the pandemic the hard way is we just have a lot of services that require you to come to a county building and stand in line. And so we immediately started having discussions with the departments. How do we not make them come to a building and stand in line? How do we take that and digitize it somehow and make it available through some other way or service? So, you know, we get, we get, you know, public records request and things like that. And so part of that effort is, well, well, how do we make that more accessible so that our staff spends less time providing a responded government or a public records request? And we just say, hey, we've got an open data set here that people can go to and find information that they may need. So tho- those are examples of efforts that are included here. If you, if you read down into some of the material that you clearly wouldn't be doing those kinds of things as a private entity, but as a public entity, they're very important for us to focus on. So those are the key areas I would say that are, are incumbent in here. And again, you know, financial stewardship, we're, we want to be good stewards of the public funds. Private companies, you know, shareholder value and, and, you know, more focused on that. But, and again, transparency there, how, what are we spending our money on? How are we spending it? And, you know, are we doing the right things there? So those are the key things I would focus on or, or say are highlighted and we think they're covered there. If you think there's, there's another one, let me see, I, I will also say this. You know, once we have the, the, the mission, vision, guiding principles, this was the next set of work because you got to imagine we started with like 15 categories and it's, you know, 15 is too much, you know, nobody's going to remember 15. And how do you group? And, and these are similar and come up with a more concise set. So, you know, this is where we landed. But again, this is part of this discussion and dialogue is if these don't resonate, we think we're missing something. You know, we're, we're happy to make whatever kind of adjustments that, that make this a document that people can, you know, get behind, understand. And things represent, you know, all the work efforts that Washington County is doing.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm totally fine with what you've chosen here. But I really appreciate how you reminded me of something that I found myself talking about quite a bit when I first ran for this position and through 2019. One thing that's unique about us in government is that we have to welcome all comers, that we don't get to select our customer base and say, oh, no, 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 we don't care about servicing you, right? For example, in approaching county government, I know personally, I'm getting older and I don't really feel like dealing with system upgrades. Oh, look at that. My phone doesn't even show up with this background. System updates on these handy dandy little supercomputers that I get to hold in my hands now. Whereas for some of my 20 something nephews, doesn't bother them in the least. They're like, oh, cool. I'm going to get a new feature. And it's like, oh, I don't want a new feature. I don't want to have to learn about some, some other change. So you know, that's part of what we in government have to do. We have to make sure that we can service a whole range of customers. Thank you. I am all set on slide 11. I have just two short questions. It's on the slide titled ITS portfolio governance. Somehow on this slide, as I was, oh, aligning with the county strategic plan. You used the phrase around there being a portfolio approach. Could you tell me a little bit more about that? Because I'm not sure I particularly grasp that yet. And by the way, I meant to say on the previous slide, you don't have any reason to apologize. This is terrific information. The reason I'm asking these questions is I didn't, with my own self critical self, I didn't feel I could absorb it fast enough. So thank you again for your patience with me and for my colleagues too. So portfolio approach.
So we, we really, you know, every, IT is constantly working on a, a set of initiatives. And in any given year, it's in the 200 range. And so that's the portfolio. The portfolio is all, is the, is the sum total of all the individual requests we've received. Small to large across the county. So every, every planning cycle, the department submit requests to IT for, you know, new services, new hardware, new equipment. And, and some of those are small and some are those large. And in addition to that, we have enterprise, things that have to happen, part of the technology lifecycle planning. And ERP is a good example of that where, you know, eventually you have to replace your ERP system. It's just, you know, that's just, again, it, it has a life cycle. It has a really long one, about 20 years. And we're towards the end of that 20 year life cycle forward. So you have to start those up. So we, we have to step back and say, we have this whole, whole portfolio of requests and limited IT resources, limited IT funds. So you really have to think about it at that portfolio level of all the requests coming in. And then again, you know, take off your, your, you know, well, your, you know, take off whatever hat to the department you're in. And you put on your one Washington County hat and you say, hey, of everything we're working on and all these requests, what is really the next most important thing for us to do? You know, making sure that we're focusing the limited resources and limited funding on the most important things for the county. And so what this, what this effort does is it puts together And so what this, what this effort does is it puts together a body of folks at, within Washington County that help facilitate that. So the portfolio is that vast array of, it's a sum total of all the requests. And then trying to figure out which one of those we're going to move forward, which one of those we're going to defer and which ones we may not end up doing.
So is there one portfolio steering committee or will there be multiple portfolio steering committees?
Well, there'll be an IT portfolio steering committee. So it'll be the, the committee that's helping guide the, the, making decisions on the portfolio of IT projects that we work on.
There is one steering committee. Chair Harrington, there's one steering committee made up of representatives from across the county. Really appreciate this is, this is a best practice that IT is brought to the county and one that we will be replicating throughout the county facilities is another great example of how this type of approach could be used. So that we're really taking that one Washington County look at our assets.
Okay. So it's composed of decision makers across all departments. Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you. And now I'll be able to replicate the model when we're talking about other major service areas such as facilities. Got it. Got it. Got it. Okay. One last question. It's with regard to elections. So through, thanks to our national news continuing to sell us fear, fear, fear. I have fielded a couple of questions or comments from area elected officials about continuing concern that elections through November of this year, let alone in two years, will continue to be more challenging in, in ways that make us realize that we need to be very mindful of how we are building public trust. And so it made me realize that back in 2019, our elections department moved from the East Murray Building over to the Alaklek Building, which gave them the space to have a second counting machine. And we've heard a little bit more about software needed for counting different kinds of ballots and making sure that all that operation works really well. And, you know, you, you guys were rock stars in making sure that, that hardware issue that caused outage, you got right on top of that. But our election systems were standalone enough to keep doing the job that the public needed of us with confidence and tied in with the Secretary of State. But it made me realize, and this may not be a question you, anyone wants to answer today, but from one election to the other, I'm not as mindful of election software needing to be updated like any other software. And so that's just a part of how work happens, right? Part of what we do is general government, right? Elections, tax bills. And we take for granted all the powerful systems that are behind all of that. All of the records that we rely upon for the thousands upon thousands upon thousands different properties and businesses in Washington County. So it's like, wow, I don't know how you might want us to appreciate that. But that is magic that each of you deliver every single day in the course of your work. So as I remember, Erin Doyle and others created a, a video recently on the county library, right? To bring to life how that is a resource that has value for each and every one of us, even though we may not even know it exists, right? But it's part of having a working public justice department, right? So that people and, and lawyers have access to materials that they may not have otherwise. So I guess in the end, hearing myself out loud, it's not that I have some particular question, but rather I want to encourage you to continue, whether it's once a year, twice a year, I don't know. But figure out what, what part of a system or the workings of this system that maybe there could be some short videos on to help the rest of us appreciate the workings of government and the work that you do. Because it helps each and every one of us go about our day seamlessly. And without it, I wouldn't be able to travel through traffic lights or have my ballots counted or get copies of my birth certificate or death certificates, you know, things like that.
I mean, that's a great suggestion and I, we, we don't do a lot of that now. And, you know, elections is a really good example where there's a lot of behind the scenes work that occurs to ensure that, you know, the elections are safe and secure and the like election systems, you know, stay up and running during the, during the, you know, during the time that we, we need them to be there. So that's, that's good feedback and we'll have to think about, I mean, it could be elections. It could be our tax collection or any of the other major things that we do. So that's great feedback and.
Nobody else is going to tell our story. Right? Cool.
Exactly.
Well, I don't have anything else. I learned a lot today. Thank you very much. Thank you for being a powerful information technology services department for us. I'll turn it over to my colleagues to see if you have any thoughts you would like to contribute before we move on or also to Ms. Fuller as well.
I just appreciate the, the sensitivity of my knowledge base. So thank you.
I don't really have any questions to ask, but to say, I'm really excited for this. And I think I sort of had this run in with the IT department when I first joined in with my question of my, can I use my Mac? So I'm really excited and I appreciate the hard work your team does and, and, and all the questions you took from me when I was new last year and asking, why can I not use Mac and why, why, why? So I'm really excited for this innovation and this path forward.
Thanks. Appreciate the feedback.
Sam, we didn't let you talk at all. I'm sorry.
You know, I've been here 19 months and I did, this strategic planning was the most exciting thing for me. Because when Chris asked me, well, should we do strategic plan now? That was very early in my tenure with the county. I said, yes, because that will help us inform on what decisions we need to make as individual contributors out there. So this has been incredibly helpful. As luck would have it, you know, it was useful for everybody else as well. So it turned out to be really well.
Good. Anything else, Ms. Fuller to close?
No, thank you very much for your time, commissioners.
Great, great. And I hope that Commissioners Willie and Commissioner Rogers will have hung in there and watched this full, full video of this meeting as they return as well. So that we can catch them up too. Thank you.
And Chair, I, I did want to just mention one thing. So as part of our, our hour, I can't get my words out, ARPA funds, we do have one FTE under Phillips Guidance that is building our video inventory. So if the board has any ideas of a video on a closer look at A, B, or C service, please let us know. There was an elections video that was developed this year and we can continue to build, build that library of videos with this limited duration position.
Well, I would turn that around to, as a challenge for each department to brainstorm with its employee sets, to come up with their short list of what they think would be useful videos to bring to life what they do for our community and approach it that way and figure out how over the course of the next couple of years, a whole suite could be produced.
Yep. And that's happening. I just realized I didn't turn it to the board. So yes.
Yeah, yeah. Other than doing it in real time, I don't, I don't know that I'll ever get to that email compared to a whole lot of others that I'm behind on. Sorry. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Rachel, Chris and Sam for being here today. Really appreciate it.
We really appreciate your feedback and comments. Thanks.
Keep up the good work. Next, we're going to move on to the Advisory Council on Racial Equity and the appointments. So for that, I'm hoping Ms. Tillman will be joining us. There she is. Take it away, Latricia.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board. I am here along with Amanda Garcia Sneller, Community Engagement Manager. And we are wanting to give you, the Board, an update on the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. So just very briefly, I'll give you a little historical timeline. As you all recall, in February 2020, the Board adopted the Equity Resolution, which specified the need to create an Advisory Council to elevate equity policy concerns and opportunities to the Board. And last August, August 2021, we launched our Advisory Council on Racial Equity Co-Creation Committee, which then you voted to establish in April of 2022. So given the establishment of the Advisory Council on Racial Equity, we set about doing recruitment for the inaugural Advisory Council members. And I will turn it over to Amanda to give you an update on the community member positions and vacancies. Go ahead, Amanda.
Thanks, Latricia. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners Fai and Teresa. As Latricia mentioned, we, in this process, we conducted a pretty extensive recruitment, which yielded 19 applicants for 13 available positions. Excuse me. In addition to the postings that the comms team did, so Phillips Crew did on the county website, the media release and posts on Nextdoor, OEICE also posted this in our usual communication channels, which include the, the weekly community, community engagement connections e-update and the CPO meeting notices. And given the newness of this Advisory Council and the community interest and really its genesis that began prior to the DEI resolution, we felt it was critical to really ensure that our community partners and community leaders were aware of this opportunity. So we did individual emails and phone calls and telling people about it at every possible opportunity. We just really wanted to make sure that we got the word out. In the end, we had 19 applicants. Two of those came in after our extended deadline. We had an initial deadline and then we extended it by a week. And, and two of those applicants came in after that time. And we didn't have very much, we just had a few days between that end deadline and the time that we needed to submit documents for the agenda, for the board agenda. So we weren't able to consider those two, which left us 17 applications to review. The review and interview team consisted of Latricia Tillman, Ashley Horn and myself from OEICE. And then also Danielle Nava, the Senior Staff Assistant to the Chair. All four of us reviewed all of the applications, looking for lived experience of racial equity, in-depth knowledge of Washington County Black Indigenous and People of Color community history or relationships with Black Indigenous and People of Color-focused organizations, racial equity expertise. We also looked at whether or not people were a county resident or a business owner, had prior advisory board experience, community engagement experience, things like that. Then we interviewed the applicants, asking them three different questions related to their vision for what true equity would look like in Washington County, approaches to advising and informing a decision-making process, and how their understanding of the intersections of their own personal, community or professional identities relate to furthering racial equity in Washington County. Not all four of us were able to interview everybody because there were so many and the competing schedules. But we usually had at, at least two of us and sometimes three of us. And occasionally all four of us were able to be in interviews. We scored people based on all of these criteria that I listed. And then we looked at distributions across demographics and geography and discipline. And based on all of this, I feel like we have a really good slate of 13 applicants with really rich experience who we think will bring great diverse perspectives to acre the Advisory Council on Racial Equity and be a benefit to the development of this new council. In your packet, you have the applicant summary, which gives a very high level snapshot and the redacted applications and resumes, if they were provided, provide a little more detail. So with that, I just wanted to list off the, the 13 names that we, that our recruitment team is recommending for appointment. Barry Johnson Smith, Serena Boyce, Eden Lopez, Kanichi Oniagusi, Lauren Bulling, Maria Caveado Rubio, Melissa O'Brien, Mohammed Alajori, Endogo Kuma, Olga Acuna, Rania Ayub, Susafina Affamui-Pitorf and Zakiya Ibrahima. And they, I wasn't going to read to you from the applicant profiles, but rather just open it up for your thoughts or questions.
Well, I'll, go ahead, Commissioner. Sorry. I was jumping right in.
I, I went through all this and, and looked at all of the applications and, you know, I was, I think we've got a great group of people here. I will tell you that when I, you know, I looked at the geography as well. And I know, I know that, I understand that you got the 19 and you're working with that in that parameter. I'm hoping that we have a larger interest into the future. You know, that's, that's, and, and I trust that everything was done to, to garner that. I'm just, I'm thinking about the diversity of my district and the fact that it's, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of demographic diversity in my district and I, there's just one person there. And that was the only concern that I had in looking at this was kind of a focus around the Hillsborough area versus, and I, I'm not sure if that's a fair representation, but when you, when I look at all District Four, you know, I, I think that it's, it's mostly in that, in that area. It's, it's our, it's our first time and I, I recognize that we're getting started. I'm just, I, I'm just raise that as a, as a potential issue. And I did, I did read your note about, well, you know, this, we didn't try to balance districts. I, I understand that. And I'm, I'm not, I don't want you to interpret this as me not being pleased. I'm, I'm very pleased with the work that went into it. But I do think that into the future, we need to, to, maybe, maybe it's incumbent upon us, the commissioners to get out and talk about this more. So, you know, I'm, I'm willing to take that responsibility as well.
Yeah, I think I'm, can you hear me? Yeah, I think this is, you have, I think I know a lot of majority of the people that are from, identified from District Four or have been accepted to this committee who live in District Four, I guess is a better way to say it. And they're amazing leaders, but I was wondering, I was like, well, where are the leaders from District One? But I get it and I a hundred percent agree with what Commissioner Pam Tracy is saying. And then look forward to, how do we balance that geography in the future? But you've got a great group of list. You've, you've, I could tell you put in a lot of work because it's the leaders that you bubbled up. I can certainly say you've got amazing leaders who have a good track record identified on that committee and that are not the usual suspects. So congratulations and you're in New Washington County.
If I might respond, Chair Harrington, one of the things that I was reflecting on as we also were concerned about the district. as we also were concerned about the district representation is that the people that we are connecting with are members of communities that are not limited to a particular geography. They live all over Washington County and in the region as well. And so I think that is one of the things that we'll want to socialize is that as people step into this role, that they are bringing a community, a cultural community perspective, not a geographic community perspective.
Well, I'm glad that the one person that I helped make sure knew of this opportunity before we announced it is, is here, happens to live in District Two. So, yay. I managed to do a little bit to help. So, but I also want to thank the members who applied that were not advanced or recommended for this round to please know that these are open public meetings. And, you know, feel free to attend because there, we always have some folks where work or regular life gets in the way, or they need to move outside of Washington County. So the future continues to bring opportunities. So I am just absolutely grateful that we have such a caliber slate of community members who are willing to contribute their time and expertise to help guide us forward and advise us to do better in our work. So I'm, I, I'm really happy with this roster. Thank you very much for all of your work. So when do we actually get to do the appointments? It looks like June 28th. Woo-hoo.
Yes, we'll be back. Yeah. Thanks, Latricia.
Terrific. Commissioners, any other questions or anything? Great. Well, job well done. Thank you again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's see, folks, it's almost 2:30. How about if we take a fifteen-minute break and come back at 2:45 for our last topic? Great. See you back here in just over fifteen.
Welcome back, Commissioners. All right, and back to you Chair Harrington.
All righty, from IT to equity to government relations, we are traveling the portfolio today. That is Washington County, so it's with great pleasure that I turn things over to our terrific government relations team, so please take it away Ms. Doyle and company.
Thank you, and good afternoon slash evening to the Board of Commissioners. Erin Doyle, your senior government relations manager, one of three folks on your team today that are coming from DC. We left Paige to hold down Oregon for us while we're there, so glad to have her there. Your entire GR team is here today, both your regularly employed and appearing folks, Paige and myself, and Steve Palmer and Dave Haynes from Vans Goyek here in DC who represent us at the federal level, so next slide please. Just really quickly, we're kind of here to provide a quarterly update about what's going on in the world of policymaking that will have impact or benefit to the county, so we're going to start with a federal update from our team at Vans Goyek Associates, and then Paige and I will give you a brief state update about the things we're hearing that might come up in 2023, but also what happened during legislative days last week, and then we're going to walk you through our proposed 2023 agenda development process and timeline, and we are asking one very important policy question today, is does this proposed agenda process meet your needs, or are there things you would like to see added to it? So with that, I will hand it over to the next slide, and Steve or David, I don't know who's headed in first, but here's your federal update.
Thank you very much, this is Steve Palmer, Chair Harrington and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and I'll kick it off and then turn it over to my colleague David Haynes. First, before we launch into the federal update, let me just say we've had some very, very successful meetings today with Senator Wyden and the staff of Senator Merkley talking about transportation issues. Commissioner Rogers did an excellent job with the mayors of highlighting the programmatic needs and project needs, and I'll just say that Erin deserves an extra day off for having to make the commute and then doing this party tonight, so with that, where we are in terms of what I'd like to talk about today is the budget process, and Congress is really working to try, as always, to try to work through the appropriations process. Now, we have to remember that this year, the budget process got a late start, because the last year, if we remember, the omnibus didn't get done until March. President Biden's budget was sent to the Congress in April, and since then, the House and Senate leaders on the appropriations committees have been trying to figure out how they can work out a top line number, there's no budget caps right now, there's only the annual appropriations process, and can the Senate and House leadership work through and come up with a number for overall number for defense and overall number for non-defense programs? They've been meeting, they've been fairly positive in terms of having cordial meetings. The good news is the two top Republicans, the Democrat Chairman Pat Leahy from Vermont and Senator Richard Shelby from Alabama are retiring, so they want to get this bill done too, they'd like to see their projects that are in the bill included, but as usual, there are troubles, there are always issues that come along, there's no guarantee that they're going to reach an agreement, but the House leadership, Speaker Pelosi and Stanley Hore, the Majority Leader, have said, we're going to go ahead, they're going to go ahead and move their appropriations bills, there are 12 different bills, not all are relevant to the county, we've been working with appropriations committees on those that are highest priority, the transportation, housing, and urban development, for example, it was one we've focused a lot of attention on this year. The House leadership has said they want to have their bills through the committee process in this month of June, and on the floor, passed by the floor in July, so before they go away for the August recess, they want to be able to have those bills completed. The Senate is likely to consider those bills, push those bills into September, not a big surprise there, the last several years, they have not had bills that have been approved by the committee, they just post them, and that gives the staff something to negotiate with, and if they continue on that path, it's likely that there'll be a continuing resolution, keep the government operating past September 30th, which is the end of the fiscal year. Now, with all of that said, there has been some forward progress on behalf of the county. We've been working with, as I mentioned, with the different appropriations subcommittees on the county's Aloha Livable Community and Safe Access to Transit Project. Also too, we are able to happily report that both Senators Wyden and Merkley have submitted to the appropriations Subcommittee the project that your staff was working on to provide 2.6, almost 2.7 million dollars for road improvements on the TB Walton Valley Highway to improve road connections and transit access, so that's now, before the committee will know sometime later this summer, in terms of how the committee is disposed of those projects. That, in addition to the appropriations process and earmarks, there are a number of different grant opportunities that we'd like to highlight for you. There are, these come out of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, they are all relevant to the county, not every single grant program coming out at this point is going to be of interest to the county, but for example, the Safe Streets for All Grant Program is a program to allow counties and other municipalities and other local governments, excuse me, apply from grant funds competitively that can be used for projects such as widening shoulders, protecting bike lanes, collecting better traffic data. And we know that that's out there now, in the very near future, the Bridge Investment Program is going to be coming out, which is another competitive program. Historically, bridge monies flow through the state DOTs through ODOT, but this is an opportunity for localities to apply directly to the US Department of Transportation for bridge competitive grant funds as well. This is a program that's really focused on improving bridges, maintaining, improving the reliability of those bridges, not necessarily building new bridges, although those will be under consideration. And then also too, two other programs that might be of interest, there's the Re-Connecting Communities Pilot Program, if you remember back in the 1950s and 60s when communities were divided by interstate highways, this is an attempt to try to begin the process that President Biden wanted to do, and that is find ways to ameliorate some of those impacts so that communities can find ways to reconnect, not necessarily tearing down interstate highways, but finding ways that they can actually reconnect. And there's a culvert program, as mundane as that may be, there's a program, grant program that will be coming out this summer to look at how federal funds can be used to replace culverts on highways and bridges and transit crossings. Lastly, I failed to mention, I mentioned two, but there's a third one of importance to the county too, and that is the Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program, which will be for great separations or closures, it's a new program, we don't know exactly how these programs, these last three programs will be rolled out in terms of the criteria or eligibility, but we do know the step, from the statutory language that Congress passed, that there will be effort to try to improve the safety of these different types of transportation programs. There are other programs, grant programs, non-transportation programs that are coming out, a lot of them have been announced, but for example, there are more, there's more money coming out for broadband, but the program that's coming out soon is really focused, has recently been announced, it's really focused on the states, and the funding will go to the states for those kinds of broadband grant programs. With that, I believe my colleague David Haynes is on, let me see, okay, good, thank you.
Hi Chair, and hi Commissioners, it's great to be with you. Thank you for allowing us to provide this federal update, and some of the legislation that we wanted to touch on and update you on, for starters, wanted to touch on the Modified Build Back Better Act, and the potential that is continuing, you'll likely see some discussions of this in the news this summer, but Congress is continuing, even though the chances are difficult to pass a modified Build Back Better Act, Congress is continuing the negotiations and trying to figure out how they can bring together different pieces that we saw earlier this year and last year, and utilize a reconciliation process. Just as a reminder, that reconciliation process and passing a potential Build Back Better type act, using the reconciliation act would allow a simple majority in the Senate to pass any legislation, so it'd make it a lot easier passing, but Congress needs to do that by September, they hope to use that simple majority kind of passage, expedited passage route. We're likely to see a much more modest bill than what we saw from the 1.7 trillion dollar bill that you may remember that was proposed, but likely we'll see climate measures and even some deficit reduction efforts that could be brought together, but if, you know, they'll have to, likely have to be a pay for, and if Democrats decide to go with corporate tax increases, you know, it will be a Democrat only bill, but there's still, you know, it may be high hopes, but there's still hope that some Republicans, Democrats can bring some Republicans over, but it's going to make it difficult if, depending on the pay for for the bill. I know Steve was mentioning different funding sources from the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, as he mentioned, we're going to continue to see funding come out of that bill, and, you know, we're working with staff on those, but the federal agencies also are continuing to formulate these programs, some of the programs that Steve mentioned are brand new, and other programs are brand new, so agencies continue to work throughout this year to create these new programs and fill in the gaps that Congress left for the agencies to fill in, and we'll continue to see guidance on the programs, whether it be on the bridge program or other programs as well. Lastly, I wanted to touch on the potential for mental health reform, there is a push for some kind of large mental health reform legislation to come out this summer, specifically in the Senate, there is, there are expectations that some form of mental health reform will come out, we've been talking to staff and the delegation about that, you know, part of that will be continuation of legislation that's previously passed, that's expiring, some of the programs that are expiring, but also there'll be opportunities for issues like telehealth or mental health issues for children and youth, there's been a lot of work that's going on there, and we're continuing to work with the Senate Health Committee and the Senate Finance Committee as well as staff. This also could be an area for Senators to combine issues like gun control as well to move that into the mental health reform, because that's an area that Republicans and Democrats are potentially coming together on this issue, but we will continue to see negotiations go on there, and it will inevitably, as we near, get closer to midterms, that will be an issue that is worked on in Congress this summer, at least efforts there. So with that said, want to pass it back to Steve.
I just want to say quickly that, you know, really today's, the meetings today with Commissioner Rogers and the mayors were really a great experience, because this, Congress is opening up, the Senate, we were able to meet with the Senate offices today, Congresswoman Bonham to meet you on Thursday, and it's really the first time in two years we've seen, had face-to-face meetings and able to talk about county priorities. David and I have been meeting behind the scenes with staff, doing Zoom calls, talking about the county's transportation infrastructure and housing needs and priorities, but it really was a wonderful experience to be able to say face-to-face today with Senator Wyden, for example, and Merkley staff, that really these are the needs that we need funding for, such as the Solacreek project, Parkway project. I think David will wrap it up and he'll answer any questions.
Yeah, thanks Steve, you know, I just wanted to, Steve mentioned housing, just wanted to briefly touch on, we've had some really good housing meetings as well with staff over the last few weeks also, on everything from moving to work, the Moving to Work Program, to, you know, making sure that the Senate and House staff continue to know that the federal HUD programs impact the county, and also on some of the rehabilitation projects as well that the county is working on. So we're grateful that in-person advocacy is looking a little more normal now, and, you know, we look forward to seeing y'all in person more as well, so with that said, we're happy to further discuss any of these topics or answer any questions.
I'll just say, I really appreciate the work that Vans Goyek does for us, Steve and David. My lack of joy here today has nothing to do with your being the messengers at all. You know, just for example, I'm a little fatigued about hearing about Build Back Better, right, it's just, it's been talked about for too long, right? Mental health and actually ensuring that the workforce that we have that is carrying student debt, that is moving out of public mental health and into the private sector because they need to pay off their student loans, or that people are moving out of mental health altogether because they can't make a decent living at it, right? All those are workforce challenges, and it's like, hey, Congress, get over it, we need big changes, we have way more societal ills, it seems, with a larger population than decades ago, yeah, we had societal ills then too, we had poverty way back when, 40 years ago too, but think big folks, because the USA is going downhill compared to other countries, and we don't want to be in a contest for the bottom. So, anyway, see, I'm on a soapbox, so I am really pleased with the work that you're doing on our behalf, working with our delegation that we know is very empathetic with all these messages, so thank you for the work that you do, working with our government relations direct employees here at Washington County, and just keep going, thank goodness for you.
Thank you Chair Harrington, let me just say very quickly, our focus today was on the delegation, because we have Commissioner Rogers here today, but one of the things we've been spending a lot of time over the last several months is really talking to the other committees, we try really hard to make sure that they understand Washington County's priorities as well, it's, it can be challenging, because for the very reasons you talked about, but, and much more, but the message is getting out that, you know, the county is a strong, in a strong place, needs money to help the people that are not necessarily doing as well as others, and we can't forget the fact that they need as much as anyone else.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, trees are fine, anything you wanted to add?
Just thank you.
Yeah, same here, and I think, you know, Chair Harrington, the one thing that you mentioned that I really think it's relevant, especially for Washington County to be, to be part in that conversation or that push, or however, you know, Erin, you're there, and whenever you see the opportunity in both you, Steve and, I think this push for canceling student debt, and I know our delegation feels the same way, but that will be so helpful to so many people that live in Washington County, and I think any push you can do, please carry on the chair's message around, this is what's pressing for people, you know, this is what's relevant, so just wanted to echo those comments that the chair made. I'm sorry, I have my camera off, getting the kids ready to head off.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you bringing those issues, that issue up. Okay, thank you very much. It's I appreciate you bringing those issues that that issue up and we totally understand. So thank you.
Should we switch over from federal to state now?
Yeah, I think we're going to go to Paige first. Thanks.
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you so much, Stephen, David. I think you guys are off the hook. If you'd like to hop off, I know it's late in DC. We really appreciate you. Thank you. And good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, Paige Spence, I am one of your government relations managers. Erin and I, as always, switching to the state side of things, are going to speak to the issues in our portfolio to provide a policy summary, as Erin mentioned. And then we will talk about process and how to best work with your board on the 2023 agenda development. So starting with my portfolio, Health and Human Services first. Under Behavioral Health, I'm just going to kind of run through these topics pretty quickly. Most of them are going to be familiar to your board and our carryover issues or continuing themes. So the first bucket of behavioral health continues to be where a lot of the action is happening. As we know, these needs have just increased and really shown themselves more during COVID and since everything kind of happened about years ago. So one of the issues on everyone's mind is Measure 110. As you'll recall, last year, Measure 110 made Oregon the first state to decriminalize a small personal possession of illegal drugs. But what's important for us today is that the anticipated savings achieved from combining marijuana sales with the cost of enforcing or not having to enforce these these charges. That revenue is to be funding a new drug addiction and treatment and recovery program for the state. Unfortunately, as folks are probably aware, Measure 110 implementation has faced some challenges. And during legislative days hearings, both in the Senate and the House, the advocates are pretty critical of the Oregon Health Authority and their ability to get this money out the door. And the Oregon Health Authority leadership, especially in light of a Secretary of State audit on this particular program, O H C leadership were pretty candid that there have been some obstacles. And the Secretary of State's office as in the audit, as well as Oregon Health Authority leadership, both opine that the program will likely to be able to get back on track. But there are some conversations percolating about revising the measure via statute in the 2023 session. And what I'm going to be looking out for in particular is just ensuring that coordination with our community mental health program is happening from the state. The second topic under Behavioral Health is opioids. You your board will recall that we supported Hospital 4098 in the 2022 short session to stand up a body to allocate the state's portion of the opioid settlement. And I wanted to just let you all know that the names for the task force that will be sort of the governing body to allocate dollars every year hasn't been stood up yet. But we didn't put Nick O'Conne, our Community Mental Health Program Director here, Washington County, forward to represent the tri-county area as a behavioral health expert. So kudos to Nick and we'll keep you your board posted, but just wanted to let you know that good news. And then finally, under Behavioral Health, I wanted to mention Aiden Assist. There are several work groups that are ongoing since the 2021 long session to fully fund and address Oregon State Hospital capacity issues with Aiden Assist clients. There's been recent litigation and so now it's looking like a moment to try to bring back those liability conversations we had before where the where Washington County and our partners could potentially be indemnified for, you know, kind of actions of someone who was out on an Aiden Assist order that might not be under our control. And then pivoting over to early childhood, we have some good news here. The emergency board, which met on Friday, the last day of legislative days, approved a million dollars in funding established in a bill from the 2021 session that kind of never got off the ground with actual funding for a pilot program to provide gap financing for affordable housing projects co-located with childcare or early learning centers. And there are really strong evidence that co-locating early care and education with affordable housing really do help children and families thrive. And then the second bucket item under early childhood, and again, both of these don't really impact us as an agency, but of course, impact the community, the well-being of the folks that we serve. The other allocation was a state and federal partnership called Project Aware that puts in sustainable infrastructure over the long term for school-based mental health, prevents youth violence in school settings, mental health navigators, addictions and substance use counselors. So really looking forward to having some more supports for our young children who we know have been really facing some some certain trials over the last couple of years and deserve a break and some support. And then finally, under Public Health, there the interim committee met on COVID-19 response and really just kind of talked about long-term planning for the state of Oregon. So nothing that will come as a surprise to you or that you haven't already heard from our public health experts here. But just wanted to mention that really the focus of the conversation was on that vaccines remain effective and planning for vaccines for kids under five. And then what summer and fall learning can look like for kiddos and transition from pandemic to endemic. Yes, Chair Harrington, I see your hand is up.
It isn't so much a question for you today, but I'm fast forwarding a bit, sorry. I'm fast forwarding from here we are now at the beginning of summer 2022, right? This time last year, we got slammed by Delta. Health, the hospital system was severely impacted. It looks like we have a bunch of people, an appreciable number of cases of people getting COVID here, but the hospitalizations is keeping up or the hospitals are keeping up because all of our tools and techniques, vaccinations and boosters are keeping people from getting severely ill and needing to go to the hospital. Yay, those efforts are helping. But nonetheless, our public health team or our county, our team of Washington County and our community-based organizations continues to help scores and scores of families, right? People are still getting sick. They're not able to go to work because they have to get well and not cause spread to other people. And so my sense is that there is a level of service that the county is able to provide, mainly thanks to ARPA funding. And so I'm fast forwarding a little bit as that continues. And I don't know what the current run rate is of such level of service, but fast forwarding through ledge days through the end of the year before we have the new state legislative session, what, next February? So what I'm commenting on is somehow, Ms. Angie, if the Washington County team, I assume Health and Human Services, right, could develop some way of sharing for our government relations team especially, and board members too, all the better, to be able to share to all of our legislators before those ledge days start of here's what we actually not only did with those dollars, but here is the community impact that we had, both in terms of families helped as well as business recovery, I think is something we're we're going to need to be able to tell those two stories. So thank you.
Absolutely. I'm glad you mentioned that, Chair Harrington. And, you know, I recall actually just this morning, reading an article in the Oregonian about hospital capacity in Washington State, feeling a bit fraught at the moment. So hopefully Oregon isn't next, but we know we're going to have a long road to full recovery. One thing that I have been noodling around with partners at our other two metro counties, Clackamas and Multnomah, is putting together a public health tour. Your board may recall that we did a public health tour, gosh, right when I started the counties. It's been almost three years and we're looking at some dates in August and September to take legislators back to our public health teams where we'll talk about our work, not only with COVID response, but the other public health work that has not stopped and will need to increase over time as well. And we are kind of three-ish years now into fully on track to fully fund public health modernization. And so the idea for the tour that we're planning in the fall will be to do exactly what you're talking about, to highlight the needs, to highlight the community impact and the good work that we do and and how much it takes and how much funding it takes. And so we're planning on centering that tour actually around the dates that work for the Ways and Means Coach here is because those are the folks who will really be able to fund our work. So I'm stay tuned for more details on that. This is actually if our public health team is listening, a surprise to them because we've just been emailing and talking over the last couple of days about this. But you're raising something exactly that's on my mind, so I just wanted to go ahead and mention that. Thank you. And with that, I think actually if we could advance to the next slide, please, I will switch over to I'm talking about housing and community development. Thank you. So again, we're back or over to the housing slide. But of course, COVID-19 recovery is, you know, still on the slide because the two are just linked, right? And so the topic here I wanted to mention is rental assistance and eviction prevention. And your board has been tireless, as has the legislature, with accommodating folks' needs, both financially and with regulatory sort of grace periods to repay rent and get folks back on track with housing stability. We know that there is still a critical need in Washington County going into legislative days. There's about just for affordable housing providers, almost a million and a half in rent arrearsages. And of that, about 930,000 from the Washington County Housing Authority. So I don't know how the dollars are actually going to be spread out quite yet. The OHCS will have to do a formula, but there was a $12 million total ask from a coalition that did include Washington County for payment from the state for these rent arrearsages to make affordable housing providers whole. Out of that $12 million asked, the E Board, that emergency board, did allocate $5 million. And so we're going to have to kind of wait and see how much money Washington County gets and how that will go towards addressing our needs. But we have been given signals from legislative leadership that we can come back in September with a report out on the ongoing needs and possibly ask for an additional allocation. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that the great work that our team here at Washington County is doing to implement a supportive housing services ballot measure is getting state attention. So their second bullet here on addressing homelessness, just wanted to throw it out there that I'm here together along with Home Forward and the Joint Office of Homeless Services based in Portland and Multnomah County, presented on S H S. And some of the amazing work that's already underway, including projects at Washington County. So just kudos to our team and thrilled that that work is getting attention as possibly a model for, you know, statewide expansion over time. And next slide, please. Thank you. Finally, under General Government, which I am still covering in the absence of our third government relations manager. Please do not ask me too many tough questions on this one, but the good news is that property tax reform, as we all know, is needed for local government revenue, is still very much on the table and being discussed for 2023. Folks will understand that generally in Oregon, as a result of Measures 5 and 50, property owners pay taxes on the assessed value of their property, not real market value. And so that cap on the assessed value of property carried forward from the previous year is really hamstrung the ability of local governments to collect tax revenues. And so additionally, kind of the the schematics are there are about 150 property tax exemptions that I learned a lot about during the legislative days hearings, including government property, farms, forest land, enterprise zones, low-income housing and other other exemptions that will be very familiar to your board. And so kind of going and through the framework, the Legislative Fiscal Office discussed the constitutional and statutory limitations that currently exist on local government's ability to try to execute property tax reform. And what is important to know for now is the counties are at the table. The conversations at the legislative days included legislative revenue, state department of revenue and the Association of County Assessors. So this is a conversation that a lot of legislators, again, we're going to have tons of turnover after the election, are going to need to really get up to speed on. And so I think it's too early to predict what may come forward in a bill for 2023, but please that that topic is up for discussion. And I think, Chair Harrington, I'm seeing your hand. Yep. And if they're, I'm happy to take questions and then I'll turn it over to Erin. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Trese, you you covered this topic several months back. I don't remember if it was late in 2021 or early in 2022, but I know that through, I think it was the AOC General Government Committee, Washington County helped provide some dollars for polling with regard to some research on property tax or taxation. I've lost sight of that. Is that still ongoing or was there anything back from that?
That was in coordination with Commissioner Giappal. And it's a very good question and I need to find out, I I will find out the answer to that. Maybe Erin can, Erin's smiling. That means that she might know something more.
We are tracking that down. That information is not held by any of the counties. And so we have to get it from our partners to the extent that we can for, because polling data is complicated in public records.
Well, then, that tells me the next time we provide money, that means we need access.
We will have access to the information. We have access to the information. We just have to track it back down and and figure out how specific the information that we're provided in paper form is so that it's it's complicated when it comes to to polling and potential ballot measures, I will put it that way.
So follow up as needed. Great.
Yes.
Well, thank you for the discussion. And with that, we can advance to the next slide, please. And I'm glad to turn the conversation over to Erin.
Thank you, Paige, and thank you for paying attention to property tax hearings that talk about 150 property tax exemptions because that's a lot. In the land use and transportation world, I think we've kind of, you guys have, as a board, have heard what the big ticket item is going to be. And that conversation did start during legislative days and it is, of course, Interstate 5 Bridge Replacement Funding. That's also going to be a topic of conversation we'll be having with most of our delegation on behalf of J Pax tomorrow and with the US Department of Transportation on Thursday. But really, it it's kind of up to Oregon now. And that was the the start of the conversation that we need to come up with our quarter of the project, which just estimated around $1 billion, some really big numbers. So they talked about how the tolling was going to play into that and how that's not just our funding, information that you heard when the IVR team came in and provided you an update with where they are. In addition, the other big thing that ODOT is looking at is actually the DMV funding. And this isn't something that directly impacts the county, but overall does have some impacts. Because if the DMV, where vehicles are registered, is not able to keep up with the demand that it has coming forward, that can have impacts on our share of the state highway funds because it is tied to our vehicle registration numbers. And there has been a dip this year in Washington County and Multnomah County amongst and and Clackamas County seeing a noticeable drop in registration numbers. And some of those questions are around, is the DMV fully functioning at its best? And they are tying this back to an extreme shortage of employees, actually, between vacancies that they have and callouts they've had due to COVID and other reasons. They have are on a day-to-day basis, missing approximately a quarter of their needed workforce. So keeping up and and making sure that they're fully funded and making sure that their systems work better so that more and more can be done without having to go into a physical D M P location. All of these things are going to kind of pile on top of each other and hopefully start to see more folks remember to register their vehicles like they are supposed to do now that COVID is not closing those offices and then kind of a reprieve from the what's been essentially a moratorium on enforcement that's been because as a reflection of what the community can and cannot accomplish by trying to go to the D M P. In the other half of land use and transportation is land use. And land use and housing is not a done conversation. I don't think it will ever be a done conversation, to be perfectly right. But it is a much more robust and thoughtful conversation that they are having now. One of the big presentations that occurred, both in the House and the Senate Housing Committees, really looked at Goal 10, which is land use speak for how we plan for housing. Goal 10 is the housing goal and it talks about having sufficient lands to build for the variety of types of housing we expect to need in order to house the overall population of Oregon. And from there, they're looking into the Regional Housing Needs Analysis Program that has been kind of piloted under legislation passed in 2019 called House Bill 2003, which puts some onus on cities, but not on Washington County. But it ties into work that has to be done at metros level, that then trickles down to us at the local level about making sure that a variety of types of houses at a variety of types of price points to meet a variety of types of residents' needs and community members who who need different things, different stages in their life, different stages of income, different opportunities. All of those things kind of need to be better reflected in how we do our housing needs analysis and how we apportion out the expectation of housing growth across the region of the metro region. So can't expect all of the housing to occur in one city and, you know, everybody else doesn't have to do anything, but also can't expect that all of the low-income housing goes to one community. It needs to be spread across and in places that make sense so that folks can access train, high transit areas safely, quickly and effectively to get from their place of residence to their place of business or place of education. So these conversations are ongoing, and the state is really looking into this regional housing needs analysis. Chair.
I'm trying to be clear here. I support the aspirations and the goals and objectives that comes through with all of that. But I have both on this and for the larger extent with the state with everything, state. One word: no more unfunded mandates. If you want us to do that work, we need the funding to do that work. Right?
Yes. And one of the things that we've started talking about, we being local government lobbyists, including myself, AOC, LOC, cities in particular, there has been a lot of demand of our land use planners. And there has been a lot of work that they have been trying to accomplish over, to do some really big, broad changes that takes up your time, it takes up our planning commission time. And one of the things the DLCD is evaluating right now, and we are pushing them to think bigger, is what are called POPS, or their Policy Option Packages, to their budget, which is basically saying, we have our base budget to meet service needs, but then we want this additional POPS of money to go towards these particularized items. And housing, the regional housing needs analysis work is on that list for potential POPS, things related to the climate-friendly and equitable communities, which has a housing component as well as a transportation planning component. Both of those are on the list for POPS. I would say that the overwhelming consensus is it's not enough. The POPS aren't even enough to cover what we expect. It is, it's a really big challenge, because I will say, as someone who's been working in this space for quite some time, the natural resource agencies across the state make up about three percent of the general fund's budget. But the needs way outstrip that across all of those agencies, from DEQ to DLCD. So, you know, asking for ten million dollars is a good start. They're starting it too. And we're like, that's gonna get you a city or two, and it's not gonna be enough. And you can't set timelines that don't reflect that. So we are starting that advocacy with the department and the governor's office as a way to move forward. And then our members of our delegation will also be hearing that same pitch. Think big if you're gonna make us work big.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the final thing I'll say on land use is wildfire prevention and planning is also taking up a lot of state-level resources at this point in time, where they are looking at how they are demarcating areas that are highest of risk and then adding in to state rules and regulations what types of development and what levels of smart development and fire-resistant development can come in, where there are places where you see man-made structures in potential danger because of the natural resource lands that they're sitting in. So those conversations are ongoing, and they have gone from the rulemaking at the Board of Forestry, and they're now kind of turning to their sister organizations at DLCD and the Building Codes Division to really start having these conversations. And I expect that some further conversation will have to come forward in 2023 as we see what the 2022 fire season ends up looking like and how much progress they feel that they've gotten done. And there will be budgetary asks related to that as well. For building codes, those are created at the state level, so we just merely have to enforce them. And that means we charge for those services. That's how building codes pays for itself, hopefully. But and with the land use, we'll have to look at how much of an impact that will have in Western Washington County, what further regulations might come down the pipeline in order to prevent development in areas that are highest of risk. So with that, I'll go to the next slide and start talking even faster. In the world of economic development, which is another big key component with, I think, seeing what the ARPA dollars are bringing to the state, those broadband dollars that Steve discussed and David's discussed that come out of the IIJA that are coming to the state, there is a work group going on about how they're going, the state is then going to divvy up those funds. And really, the concern that we're seeing right now is they're looking at pretty low levels of data rates in order to deem someone served. And in some areas, a cell phone might then be considered sufficient broadband service under those standards. And that's just not gonna cut it, especially if, in other places that we've heard conversations around policy around telehealth, for example, you know, the cell phone. I'm working off of the cell phone internet connection right now, and I'm just feeling really lucky that it's working because the Wi-Fi wasn't great in the hotel. So, you know, this broadband conversation, I think, is ongoing, and it's very much a conversation that has to be had, not with the governor's office as they direct business Oregon, but also as the legislature to make sure that their goals are met in really, really meeting an equitable and thoughtful rollout of better broadband and making sure that the facilities are there in rural areas, but also in underserved urban areas that often get overlooked. And then the second piece of economic development, and this is just part of the ongoing conversation that's being had, and I think in Paige's portfolio in particular, looking just how we are making sure that our workforce is there to do the work that we need done. Behavioral health continues to be a huge conversation in this workforce development world, but also making sure that the dollars that have been allocated are doing the job for putting people into long-term careers that pay better than median wages or, you know, at least provide a living income in some areas, especially knowing, even hearing it from our Washington County businesses, that what they need, workforce and childcare, and childcare needs workforce. So it's all making sure that those things are happening. So those, it's just a quick update there that will continue to be monitored as they move into looking at what investments they need to make in 2023. For that, I'll take it to the next slide and talk public safety. So the court and public defense funding is not, it's not a direct function of our budgets, but it is a direct function that impacts our budgets. So if the court is not seeing sufficient employees and public defense is understaffed, we have a big problem in Washington County's public safety sphere between what has to happen in the DA's office to make sure that cases are proceeding fairly, but also what happens with our sheriff's office and in our community corrections. All of those juvenile programs, all of those have ramifications when our public defense system isn't working. So in the 2021 budget process, there was a special amount of money set aside for the E-Board to allocate if they felt that the Oregon public defense system was prepared and in need of this hundred million dollars. And that is primarily going to be directed now at the hiring of public defense individuals, but also making sure that OPDS can meet its contract needs as it renegotiates all of its public defense system contracts with all of the consortiums that provide public indigenous defense across the state. I think we're all well aware of the shortages that we're seeing in Washington County, and I am hopeful that despite OPDS only asking for a portion of their hundred million dollars, the legislature, I'm glad to report, saw fit to give them their entire hundred million dollars and said, go forth and do the things that need to be done. Our systems need to get back on track. The other key component to the conversation that was happening was just an update from the courts themselves about how they're getting back to kind of catching up with the caseload that's fallen behind because of COVID delays. And many courts are seeing themselves clawing their way back to their standard levels of court cases and catching up through all of the backlog that has existed. I know that Washington County's court is working to be very creative and partnering with the county to create a system so that some other cases can get moved through the process really quickly in a fair and engaged manner that requires having sufficient court personnel, sufficient public defense personnel, and sufficient DA personnel in order to accomplish that at what is being called wingspan two point oh. And really, Washington County is working with all the constituencies within the court to make sure that we are doing the right thing across the board to really meet those justice needs. Chair Harrington.
I didn't quite that, quite catch that phrase. What, two point oh?
Wingspan, two point oh. So like, yeah, so looking to that space, because sometimes what we need is physically space. The other piece around the court, I'll say, is we are starting to have those conversations around courthouse funding. Not really sure where the judicial department's decision is going to be about how much they ask for, but really pushing and showing that Washington County just has need, and they need to help us get started if they want to see progress on our court systems here. And then the final thing in public safety is that ongoing conversation related to how the state funds community corrections. And I have talked to the Community Corrections Association lobbyist, and we're working to make sure that the budget comes out right for 2023 is where we are in that conversation. Not sure that we're gonna see the robust and programmatic or systemic change to how we identify community corrections funding, but really trying to make sure that the 2023 isn't a tooth and nail, just to get enough to do the bare minimum of how effective and amazing that program has been as creating a justice system with justice. So with that, if there are no questions about the really high-level forecasting that Paige and I have been able to do and summary of what happened at legislative days, I'll turn to our next section, which is our 2023 Agenda Development Proposed Process and Timeline. So next slide, please. So just to remind you, it is a pretty basic question, but we are asking you to make sure that we have set you up for, to meet your expectations and to get you the information that you need in order to set the county's 2023 legislative agendas, both at the state and federal level. So next slide, please. This is just a reminder of what the state and federal agendas really look like. The state agenda includes three sections inherently. And when I see state agenda and federal agenda, we combine and work with Clean Water Services so that it's not just the county's agendas, it's the county's and Clean Water Services. And we will be working with Diane and Mark and Tracy to make sure that they're well-integrated into this process and have the full support that they need to get their agendas drafted in the same timeframe or as close to the same timeframe as we have. So within the state agenda, there are two sections that are guide labeled principles. There's the general guiding principles, which say big-picture things like no unfunded mandates. And there's, there's about eight of those. It's a really important one, and we really need to make sure that those are well-written. We need to make sure that they're reflective, the continuing efforts of this board. So we're gonna just kind of check those with you and make sure that those are the general guiding principles by which you want to work. And then there's the service guiding principles, as I call them, that kind of look at what are the principles for HHS, what are the principles for LUT? So we don't have to come on every bill and say, oh, I don't know exactly how we feel about, you know, sidewalks. Obviously, we're very supportive of them because we support multimodal, and that's a service guiding principle. If you'll recall, when we were establishing the 2022 session, service guiding principles or the agenda itself, there was some conversation that this board had with Paige and myself and Gigi at the time, maybe looking into those service guiding principles, because we've had some priorities that really probably should be turned into principles that kind of guide the work, especially around like housing and public safety funding, things like that, that we could perhaps turn away, we can continue to have as priorities, but then also work into our general service principles. And then the second part of the state agenda is the priorities, which are the immediate needs, the highest level things, the big-ticket items that you would like us to bring home. Either policy priorities, where we're looking to amend how the laws are working so that we can better function within them, but also the budget priorities, bringing home the dollars that it takes to do the services that we provide, be it through earmarks at the federal level or be it, you know, just making sure community corrections is fully funded or behavioral health gets the resources it needs to meet the guidelines for how many cases per person working for Washington County or with Washington County. The federal agenda on the county side is written a little bit differently. We don't create priorities. We do for Clean Water Services, but we instead focus on guiding principles, which really helps Steve and David kind of tackle those conversations as they happen, because the feds just work differently than the state does. And we take advantages of the opportunities by telling them, overall, this is what the board wants done. We want to be able to access housing. We want to be able to use our resources as flexibly as possible, those sorts of guiding principles. So that's how legislative agendas are presented. So next slide. This is our goal and timeline that we're proposing for how we develop them. And I changed up the format to present it, just because one of the things I kind of recognize as I was looking at our old boxes is that what we've kind of said of our doing in June, we're still doing in September, October, and November, but we're really kind of doing an assessment and outreach and identification process right now. So it's starting in June, you'll see the legislative days happen beginning, and now here we are at star of the work session, and we are going to turn this now into having those individualized conversations with the board, leadership, and departments to assess, to assess our principles, to assess the possible priorities, and also starting to identify our community partners, associations, and others for feedback and concepts, and also to make sure that we aren't over-duplicating with our associations where they're already working on the things. And we can use them as our guidepost to help us draft and move forward. And then in July through August, it's the summer, things happen, people go on these things called vacations. So we take a couple of months to do the outreach that we need to do so that when we come back to you in early October, that we've really had those conversations and can kind of tell you, this is where some of these ideas come from and to provide a bigger picture of what's happening. And then in September, we would again turn back internally, look to the county leadership, kind of identify those areas of highest need, sort of to help you understand, like, this is the biggest budget hole that we might have, or this is the biggest policies that's interfering with our ability to accomplish things. And so that is kind of what's gonna happen June through September when it comes to agenda building. But the other piece of this, which is relatively new, is to start in September of identifying potential projects for future direct investment by state and federal partners, also known as community-directed funding, also known as earmarks. So instead of scrambling to get everything put together in December and January, we want to start in September to give our departments enough time to kind of think through strategically, what are some of the projects in the next couple of years that they might be needing to have capital construction dollars for or to take advantage of other potential earmarks at the federal level or at the state level where appropriate? And to start putting that list together so we can have a sense of what those overall project needs are so that we can present them to you in a time that lets us set ourselves up for more successes with our federal and local delegations. And then in October, we'll begin the drafting process, and we have plans to come to you in October, November, and December. October being, here's generally what we're thinking, how far afield are we? And then in November, present you with a draft of the agendas, and then in December, have them finalized and prepared for adoption. So that's the overall next six months, which is frightening to me because I kind of forgot that it was already January or June, January anymore. And so we're moving through these six months with a lot of intention to make sure that we're doing enough checking back with you, but also checking with leadership departments and other community partners to make sure we're doing this well. With that, I'll turn to the next slide. And Paige.
Thank you, Erin. And I know we are short on time, but I do want to give this important topic some, a couple moments of attention. So this, I'm very excited to present, is how Erin and I and our future team member are starting to partner with OEICE to incorporate equity into our work. And so what our initial step here is, is going to be the goal of having a racial equity legislative analysis tool prepared to use in time for the 2023 legislative session, which starts, gosh, January 21st, I think. And so what I want to underscore is that I am so appreciative of the OEICE for helping work, helping me frame up a process where our government relations team can get stakeholder input both from within Washington County and with external partners, because these kinds of things are not created in a vacuum, and I am certainly not such a matter expert, even though I'm starting to take a first crack at creating some kind of baseline questions and underlying principles that could be used in a legislative equity tool leaning on other models adopted by local government. And so we'll start in late June by meeting with the Equity Policy Committee and then hoping to launch sort of an iterative pilot, right? So we know we're not going to get this right and ask all the perfect questions the first time every time. And always, also, we recognize that session moves really quickly. And so there will be some bills where we, you know, may not be able to incorporate the full use of this tool, but we'd really like to get something going, particularly as we lay out our proactive legislative agenda for 2023, both at the state and federal level. And so the goal will be to create a functional racial equity tool that lays out a clear process instead of questions to guide exactly what I just said, the development and implementation and evaluation of our legislative agenda, as well as other significant policies and agendas and programs that come from the legislative. as well as other significant policies and agendas and programs that come from the legislature or from Congress. So we are very excited to be working on this. It is just germinating, but wanted to go ahead and plug it for your board that we will, as we provide updates to you for the rest of the year, we will be incorporating our progression on this legislative equity tool. So thank you, and we're looking forward to it. Unless there are any questions, we can advance to the next slide, please. Back to Erin.
So the final piece that I wanted to bring forward is because of the timeframe that AOC works under, is that we, as members of AOC, should be participating and being part of the process of developing their legislative agenda. And the key place, and this is the beginning of this conversation about our role in AOC, I think, is that right now, the steering committees are going to start their processes. There is a legislative, they're holding kind of a principles conversation next week with AOC at their at their meeting out in eastern Oregon. And what, in talking with AOC staff, really what they're trying to do there is focus the association a little bit better. This is part of the overall look at how AOC functions as an entity. And one of the places where we have the clearest role is by attending those steering committees and making sure that we're participating so that our voice is heard in those conversations, but also helping AOC establish their focus. Instead of, and this is a conversation for the board to have amongst itself of how to participate. It is taking up time, but they are working on steering committee processes that allow for easier participation as opposed to driving down and sitting through literally eight hours of meetings on one day, continuing this work of doing it online, and going to each of their committees and setting principles like we have that kind of guide their work, and making sure that they're really getting involved and taking positions when it's effective for counties, counties writ large, and wanting to have that conversation about what is the highest and best use of AOC's capacity to do legislative work. So because they are doing this conversation next week, they're also kind of have stepped back from their steering committees a little bit in the meantime, but some of them are going to be meeting in July to start having the conversations about what they would like to see in their priorities list. My expectation is that they will be looking to adopt their agenda in the September through October timeframe, but that might change after they have their conversations with the mediation folks next week. So I really think that there is an opportunity to, if we can find the time and the capacity to dive into what happens in AOC and help direct and make sure that AOC is reflective of the fact that we really do need an association that can represent us in things that hit all 36 counties. For example, I'm just keep turning to community corrections, because it's kind of top of mind, because I was jigging around at some numbers today. But for example, in community corrections, we're all, all 36 counties are responsible for that, and all 36 counties need to be sufficiently funded, and therefore that is a clear place where AOC and that conversation, we need them to help us lead through those types of conversations. And that's how we use other associations that our departments belong to, where they specialize in Health and Human Services, or they specialize in community corrections, and really taking this opportunity to note that there is a power when we come together as an association and stand behind our association, because that gets us in more doors, and it makes more folks willing to hear us say, "This is statewide. This is not just our issue. This is not just the issue of eastern Oregon. This is an issue that is affecting counties across the state, and there's power in that." And so participation is really beneficial here if we can find the time and the capacity. Chair Harrington.
So AOC doesn't get to tell the Washington County Board of Commissioners that it just needs to work harder and be more involved in AOC. Okay? And so far, that's what it sounded like to me. I am going to the ledge retreat next Wednesday. If other commissioners want to go, all the merrier. But our county colleagues need to be willing to recognize and support the fact that we have a variety of needs. And while, as one member of five, I am willing for us to participate in AOC at some more reasonable membership level, I am no longer interested in us subsidizing government relations for our rural counties, who, as far as I know from our own government relations team, there are only four counties, four or six counties that have the level of community correction support that we do. So I'm not sure that's the best example. Public safety funding is definitely something we have in common, but that isn't something that, out of the last two years, the Public Safety Coordinating Committee has been arguing about. Okay, that isn't our common needs. That Health and Human Services Steering Committee has done phenomenal work, only to have it overturned at the ledge committee meeting. So there is really a come-together-or-not meeting next week in Hermiston. I haven't seen the agenda for it, but at the same time, there's this proposal from President Murdoch with the setup, they're going full steam ahead towards November, and they haven't made sure that the, I can't remember the exact data right now, but I have it somewhere in my portfolio, the seven or so counties that are carrying 54% of the AOC funding. They haven't bothered to check in and pick up the phone and ask me, "So are you on this journey well with us or not?" Okay, so there are some hard conversations that need to be had between now and October, I think, with regard to AOC, that you can't own and control. And so I'm not, I've been using this phrase today that is not a good one. I'm not trying to complain about the messengers at all. But there is some level of capacity and just talking and trying to understand one another as 36 counties that make up this great state that we need to spend some time on. And we'll see how it goes. So we'll keep trying. Go ahead, Commissioner Trace.
Thank you, Chair. And Erin, we've talked, and you know, I share a lot of those frustrations. But what dawned on me when you were talking just a few minutes ago is it would be helpful for me if I could think of a list of issues, or if I had in front of me a list of things that AOC can help us with, and that we're not going to get into these, I was going to use the term ridiculous, maybe I just will, the ridiculous arguments that we've gotten into previously. So, and I'm more than willing to talk about that, because Erin has helped me see in many ways the value of these associations, if we can get to the point where, and I know you feel the same way, I know you do. But it's the, it's the distance, frankly, that I have to travel to get there, and I'm willing to travel it. But I have shared my frustration, so. And Chair, thank you for going to Hermiston next week. I'm not, I was not planning on going to that. But I could have my arm twisted. We'll see. We'll talk. We'll talk.
I'm driving out Tuesday and spending the night and coming back Wednesday night. Yeah.
We'll talk.
Is there a video option? Do we know?
The only thing that's available is a phone-in option, and they have stated that people who phone in will only really be able to listen. The facilities do not really have the capacity to make it easy for folks to have communication with folks on the phone, so it's just a call-in option to observe and hear.
And I'm sure Megan McKibben is on this call going, "What is she talking about right now?" Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Erin, for this work, and it's an interesting road we have to travel.
You do go, so it's just a lot, and you end up being just by yourself, Commissioner, or Chair Harrington. I'm sure you'll be a great voice for Washington County, and if you can handle AOC by yourself. And I do like the idea of you suggesting committee, and I'm not fully grasped other than the divide between rural and urban counties. Chair Harrington, you have another time hearing me? You're leaning in. Well, that's all. I'll stop right there.
Commissioner Fai, if I heard you correctly, one of the things, it sounds like you want to have a conversation about what those steering committees look like and what some of those conversations between the urban and rural divide between those counties are, and I'm happy to schedule or add on some time to our already scheduled meeting to further that conversation with you. So, but also you can clearly talk to the chair, who's been at many of those meetings and has spoken for the county. But this is one of, but I can go through the steering committees and what opportunities they present and what areas they have steering committees for.
Will either one of you be, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Fai, go ahead.
Chair Harrington, I was just only saying thank you to Erin for that comment. Yes, that's exactly, you summed it very well.
Ms. Doyle or Ms. Spence, will either one of you be going to the meeting next week in Hermiston?
We are still having that conversation. One of the things is, I'm just coming back from DC, and I think Paige had some big meetings that needed to take place, so it's a matter of our capacity as well. But we will see if we can send someone. It is a drive. I've done it more than once, but Hermiston is lovely, so.
Driver.
So I think that is, I'll double-check. Do we have a next slide? I think the next slide is merely, do you have any questions, ideas? Are you satisfied with the process that we've laid out and our plans for how we're going to address our agenda for 2023 as well?
I am. The only need we haven't touched on is I had a meeting with Rep. McLean yesterday, and I reiterated that this board supports the interstate bridge project and the work that's going on, and it sounds like it will help greatly if we write an additional letter of support for the July meeting. And I offered, well, we can certainly send a letter from the Washington County Board of Commissioners, but if it helps to have a joint letter with each of our cities, you know, maybe there's a support letter, and through the work of all the mayors and the city councils, the sooner we can get working on something like that through the city councils before, you know, I don't know what date in July it's needed, and I know that city councils are racing to get their budget adoption done, and limited number of meetings in July, some maybe not at all. So I don't know what I might be suggesting or not.
I will follow up with Representative McLean, but I will also do some outreach to our cities to see if there's interest there, because sometimes it's easier if one person writes the letter and they can all just sign on. Okay, without anything further, we appreciate your time, your extra time this afternoon slash evening, and we will continue to work here in DC to show how much we're doing in Washington County when it comes to transportation and working to invest the federal funds that are coming our way. So thank you for your time. And Paige, did you have something you need to follow?
Yeah, I was just gonna, sorry, I just was gonna say, Chair, if you do get the agenda for the Hermiston trip, would you please share with Government Relations? I'm more than glad to consider attending, and I just want to make sure that there would be something on the agenda or, you know, that we could coordinate and make sure it would be helpful. So let's stay in touch about that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Good work. Thank you so much. Commissioners or leadership, any last things before we adjourn today's work session? Nope? All right, good work, everyone. We are adjourned this day, June 7th, 2022. Thank you.